Thanks for coming. We are going to start our October 25th council meeting. It is 7:47. I want to apologize for our lateness, but we had some very important issues for discussion. In fact, we have a little bit of carryover that we'll be having out here on the floor. I would like Ms. R.C.C. to call the roll, please.
Mr. Barker.
Here.
Ms. Darrell.
Here.
Mr. Engel.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Molnar.
Here.
Very good. I would like to ask Nick Molnar to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And once again, we have Pastor Jeff Touring here that will be saying our invocation. Jeff is from Liberty Valley Church. And if you could please say a prayer for Ken Martin's mom who passed away this week. Jeff, thank you.
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
Our Heavenly Father, God, we come into your presence and we pray for Ken Martin's mother, who has passed away. We pray for the family. We pray that you would give comfort in that situation. We pray, God, for this meeting, that you would give graces, unearned, unmerited favor upon these men and this lady that make decisions for our city. And we pray that you'd give us humility. We pray you'd give us wisdom. And we're thankful to be able to ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay, some minutes this evening. Are there any changes, or do I have a motion to accept?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes from the August 23 meeting of 2012. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, before you go to public comments, I'd like to make a motion to accept the September Finance Report presented by the Finance Director.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dave. All right, next section of our meeting is public comments. We ask you to remember that we do have a five-minute time limit. If you would like to make a public comment, you come to the front here, use the podium and the microphone. And we have a list for signing. And first on the list this evening is Sylvia Hennigan.
Good evening, everybody. Sylvia Hennigan, Hampton Drive in Macedonia. I think that this shouldn't take more than five minutes. I'm up to comment about the implementation of the Ordinance 3 of 2012, which is the ordinance that authorized healthcare coverage retroactive to January 1st. This was originally discussed back in January and in February in public comments, and at that time, there was concern about increasing people's compensation while they're in term. And apparently, we have come to the conclusion that we can do that. The increases in compensation vary by what type of insurance that you would select. For family coverage, the city pays $22,463.76. For single-person coverage, it's $7,407.96. And if you waive coverage because you really don't need it, you do get what they call an "in lieu of" payment when you waive. That's $1,800 a year. Now, considering that the council itself had indicated they weren't going to be taking the coverage, apparently that has changed. One councilman has taken the family coverage, one has taken the single coverage, and there have been four payments issued. The total for the year will be $1,800. The payment was actually $1,350 for the four who waived the coverage. Now, what I'm aware of here is a couple of things. One is, that's a huge increase in compensation. If you go from $5,000 and you add $22,463, you in fact are increasing it over 400 percent. And with single coverage, it'd be over 200 percent. What you're really talking about, though, is this. Not only is this increasing people voting to increase their own compensation during the term, but it's also a situation where we've passed an ordinance which will obligate the city, if every councilperson, not this particular council, but in future council, would take the family coverage, they'd be, we would be obligated as a city to pay $112,000 a year to do that coverage. I think that the considerations, both in the short term, I really think that voting your own coverage and voting your own increase in compensation is not correct. But assuming somebody has said it so, then the long-term impact of voting this heavy a coverage for the entire council, who after all does work part-time, I think is extremely impacted fiscally. And as someone said earlier, we are expiring a quarter percent tax increase next year. And I would hate to think that we would be considering extending it because we've got $112,000 of obligation in healthcare coverage for council members. So that's my comments for tonight. I do know, and I will say this, that Mr. Engel and Mrs. Darrell have not cashed the compensation, way of compensation checks for $1,350. Neither one of them have, but that's the only information I have beyond that. Everybody else, as I understand it, has either accepted coverage or accepted the check. Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on. Next on our list is Sue Metzl. Sue?
Well, in light of what, this is Sue Metzl, and I live on Smoker East Drive. 33-year resident. In lieu of what Sylvia just said, that my thing is kind of small peanuts, but nevertheless, I'm going to go ahead with it. I have a little dilemma with Resolution 80-212 about tablet-type devices, which I believe are iPad kind of things. Is that what, am I correct? Like, how many were you talking about, and how much was that going to cost altogether? Has anybody got that figure?
The initial thought was, and it's incorrect in the ordinance right now, but it was for council, the mayor, and council clerk. Somewhere along the lines, it added in all the departments. Not that we don't feel they could use them, but for the time being, we want to run a test with council. And the main thing with that is, there's a lot of misconceived notions about why we wanted to do this. The first and most primary thing was that we have an inordinate amount of paperwork. So not having that paperwork anymore with this device would allow us to eliminate that need for printing, for paper, ink. I know one ink cartridge for the printer is about $500, which I'm sure we blow through very quickly. The other piece of this is, the police deliver these packets to us. Now, my thought was, I'd rather have the police on the road keeping us safe as opposed to driving packets to our home, which is, I believe, a charter issue where they are supposed to do that. This would eliminate that. We wouldn't need that anymore. And additional to that, we wouldn't have the clerk shuffling paperwork all the time. So the cost over time would justify it. I mean, for me, the biggest piece was Kurt Lominger came up a few weeks back, and he's referencing an ordinance from January. With that device, you could pull that up instantly. A lot of times now, we have this wad of paper, and we don't know what we're looking at. It gets shuffled, and it's hard to keep track of what you have. I mean, we've all got paperwork stacked to the ceiling. It wasn't a matter of us wanting iPads for Angry Birds. It's a matter of, you know, making us a little bit more efficient, improving communication between all of us.
Well, doesn't everybody have access to a computer?
Ms. Metzl, could I address that?
Yeah.
By the way, what are Angry Birds?
(Laughter) It's a game.
I'll show you later tonight.
It's a game.
It's a game?
Get modern, Ken. We'll show you. He has an abacus. That's how he does his math work.
I guess, I don't know what Angry Birds are, but I'll find out. Don, do you know what Angry Birds are? Yeah, well, I'm in good company then, okay?
Sue?
Um, I just, yeah.
I thought he was asking about Angry Birds.
When I first saw this proposal, I probably had the same reaction you did, that this is a waste. However, within the past few months, we've had several requests for documents, Freedom of Information Act, and these have been directed toward council. And a lot of them have come from this Hennigan, for whatever reason, for her purposes, to the point where she's even wanted the mailing lists from the city, so she can get people's addresses in email. And I consider that an awful, terrible invasion of a person's privacy. And all of a sudden, I've been asked now, because of a Freedom of Information request, to mine my own computer at work, because the emails are forwarded to me into my computer at work, at the law office, from our city council clerk. And the information on my computer, then, is mixed with information from the city, plus confidential information that has been provided me by my clients. What sold me on it, Ms. Metzl, was just the fact that I wanted to have a device solely dedicated to city council business, so there would be no commingling with my private activities, either as a person or as an attorney, with city business. And that's what necessitated this. When you have people who start making requests that aren't particularly, in my opinion, warranted, and they make it hard on everybody else, and that's why I want to have an iPad. So if somebody says to me, "I want the information from you, Mr. Martin, concerning a particular issue within the city," and they file an FOI request, I'm just going to be able to hand them the iPad and say, "Here it is, take a look at it." And in point of fact, the ownership of that iPad won't even be mine, it'll be the city's. And I could just safely hand it over to somebody in the city, and they could pull the information out of it they like. Whereas, as it stands now, my computer could actually be subpoenaed. And you could have people come in and mine the data from there. And I seriously considered actually getting a second computer in my office to accept the email from the community. But that's what happens when you have people in the community who create issues like this.
Right. Well, I'm that, okay. So how could you guarantee, though, that it's only going to be used for council business?
I have three iPads at home already, and I have four personal computers, you know, in my office and my home.
You would.
And I just want, I just want that iPad just to conduct city business.
Right.
In fact, I don't even use the iPad, for the most part, that I bought, because I still like to read books. And you can tell I'm not using my iPad, because I don't know what Angry Birds are, okay?
Okay. Well, I just was adding up, like, how much you have budgeted for computer expenses already versus how much you've spent, you know? And it's quite a hefty sum. Appropriated for computer for all departments was around $1,12,850. But now what you've used, year-to-date expenses, was $59,834.
And you know what happened, Ms. Metzl, too? When I was on council, and the whole issue of providing cellphones to our employees came up, I felt the same way about them that you felt about the iPads. I felt that, why should we be buying our employees' cellphones? So I really think that, as Councilman Molnar says, it's a step in the right direction, because eventually, and I've seen more judges using iPads in court, I recently went to a seminar in Columbus, and they told us, a week or two prior to the seminar, that we were to download all of the information on our iPad, because they were providing no written materials. I feel that iPad is going to become an appliance, just in the same way a cellphone has just become a necessary appliance. Although initially, when cellphones were first brought forward, a lot of people felt that they were a luxury. But your point is well-taken.
Okay, and so you're saying it was, it was not, the motion is not for the council, all members of council, the mayor and all department heads, and Josephine?
When it was initially put in, the intent was for council, the mayor, and the council clerk. And somewhere along the lines, it got changed, I don't know where. And when it got to third reading, I was going to amend that regardless. And just so there's clear as can be, this would be property of the city. This is not property of anybody if it passed.
Well, right, and I think, I don't know that much about computer security, or firewalls and things like that, but I think you ought to have it where you can't go out and play Angry Birds on this thing, or, you know, whatever. That it is strictly used for city business, if you do go ahead and purchase these.
And that was the intent. And like Mr. Martin pointed out, you know, I have a laptop, I have a Kindle. This is not for me to play on. This is to do city business. And if somebody wants that electronic device, here you go.
Just for information, Sue, we would not be the only community. There are communities surrounding us that have already done this, and they tell us that it's helped immensely. So that was part of the thought process.
Okay. It just sounded like an extra expense, perhaps, that might not be justified, but in light of your comments, and I guess, the demographic of age plays into it somewhat, you know? I know that it's, everybody that's younger than 40 does everything on computers and whatnot, so I get that. Just wanted to bring it up, as a, make sure that, you know, you really need it before you buy it, kind of thing.
Sue?
Yeah.
I originally, when I started council this year, I attended a conference, the Ohio Municipal League, and I learned from the group of lawyers, to all of us, there were all new council members there, and old council members and mayors. And they explained to us the importance of going into this, due to the fact that, when I started, I didn't know that I was not allowed to delete anything on my computer at home. And all my emails are generated through my computer to home for here. And I didn't know that. And I share a computer with my two children. My daughter is high school, my son is middle school, and that's the only computer I have. And like, right now, my computer is so slow, and it wasn't like that, because I can't delete anything. And with this, I'm the one who had originally brought this up, and I started working on it in April, and I asked council, you know, about it. And so, you know, because I, I know, I think I read something that Mr. Molnar was getting blamed for this in the paper, and about introducing it, and it wasn't him, it was me that introduced it. And I wanted to make that clear, that that is kind of why. And then this way, we can, they explained to us that you can take this iPad and then give it to the IT department, and they can download, if there's a public records request, because you cannot, so you're talking, like, my computer at home, I can't delete anything for four years. And I share that with my kids, and they need it for homework.
Okay, I guess I thought maybe you all had access to computers here, like a computer
No, we don't have any. And that's what sold me, is we have no access to anything like that.
The city?
No, we don't. It's very part-time, come here once or twice a week, if that, and I've got drawers full of stuff, I can't, it's too hard to go through it, so I'm hoping, I actually have one as well.
Okay.
So it should be easier to get things done, so I can find that stuff, or when the information, when the request comes in, I can just hand the iPad to whoever and be done with it.
Okay.
Yeah, we can, what we can do, Ms. Metzl, I think maybe we could insert provision in the ordinance whereby no one can use the iPad to play Angry Birds, and, you know...
Wow, that's why it suggested firewalls, or whatever those things are.
Oh, Mr. DeWitt has a point.
(Laughter)
I don't know Angry Birds either, but I was at a meeting the other night, and another one last week, with the Kaihoga Metro Parks, and they all had iPads. And the agenda was on a screen behind the council, and projected the agenda, as well as the ordinances that you were talking about. And each councilman had the iPad in front of him with the same documents. So it was very efficient for the public to see what you're looking at on your iPad in the way of an ordinance without all the paper. So it seemed to be an efficient way of operating as well.
And just so everybody knows, that tinging sound was five minutes, but as you can see, we went beyond that, because it wasn't just you talking, Sue, it was us taking part of your time. So no problem. All right, next on the agenda is Steve Barry. Steve?
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Steve Barry. I'll put my bag down. No, I said that the last time I was here. I'm a lifelong Summit County resident. I am not a resident of Macedonia. I am the current Democratic candidate for Summit County Sheriff. I just wanted to come in and reintroduce myself. Counsel and government officials allowed me to speak back in February to introduce myself. Just wanted to reintroduce myself. I'm fighting two battles, so I apologize. I got a cold and had a little battle with a big signpost against my face about eight hours ago, including my nose. So I don't want to stay up here long. I'm a 32-year veteran in the sheriff's office, as I stated before. When I was here, retired captain, have quite a few plans to move forward, and I'm the only candidate that was with the sheriff's office his entire career. I just want to say hello, thank you very much, and I would appreciate your consideration in being an informative voter. So if you wouldn't mind checking out www.stevary, B-A-R-R-Y, for sheriff.com. I won't take anyone else's time, or any more time than anyone else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
All right, that does it for public comments, so we're going to move on to pending and/or new legislation, starting with Ordinance 68-2012.
I would like to hold Ordinance 68-2012 at second reading.
Second. Is that the second?
Yes.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance amending the Business Regulation Code by adding new chapter 794 entitled Hotel and Motel Security and Safety.
Mayor, if I may, we've been working on this for quite some time. The legal department's put together some documents that we got kind of late in the game, so we're reviewing those, as well as setting up a meeting to discuss this further with the police chief, legal, council. So we're working very diligently to come up with the best plan to deal with the problems we're experiencing with the hotels and motels.
Thank you, Nick. Moving on to Ordinance 71-2012.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we hold Ordinance Number 71-2012 at its second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post?
Yeah, I just want to mention, Mr. Mayor, that we have a meeting scheduled, and I believe that is, what, the 29th of the...
29th at 7:00.
At 7:00, to discuss the issue of electronic signs in the community. More and more of these signs are appearing in our community, and from a planning aspect, I want to make sure that council gives the proper input and direction here, in terms of the placement of these signs, the number of them, and the visibility. And this will give council an opportunity to work through the ordinance that was passed, permitting these signs, and provide some guidance, just in terms of how the Planning Commission should make its decision regarding these particular types of devices.
And now I'll read the title. An ordinance amending Section 117905 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Macedonia in order to prohibit all electric signs.
Moving on, Ordinance Number 74-2012.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Ordinance Number 74-2012 for its third and final reading. And I would like to also offer an amendment to show the new dollar amounts.
An ordinance instituting the Senior Snowplow Removal Program for the 2012-2013 Winter Season.
Can we give the amounts so that people will know?
I think Mr. Miller's going to make the amendment now.
Yes. We've gone from $16,000 to $23,300 for a one-person household, and we've gone from a $14,000 below to a $26,600 for a two-person household.
I'll second the amendment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Miller, was there a limitation for, wasn't there for third persons on that, too, or no?
No.
Okay.
Just first, I wanted to...
Okay. Sorry.
This is a good point to just pause and reflect, that, yes, we are spending money on a lot of different things, and I'm very, very happy with the fact that we can take better care of our seniors with money. We're taking care, better care of our streets with money. We're buying new equipment with money, all of this with money we didn't have. And we're making so much strong efforts to do government the right way and not overspend, that we're able to give back. And that should be mentioned here at this point, because sometimes, it seems like the politicians only want to take for themselves. We've been very, very stringent in what we do in such a way, so that we can give you more, a better bang for your buck. Moving on.
Oh, sir, he is, we have to adopt it.
Adopt.
I would like to move that we pass and post Ordinance Number 74-2012. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrell?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Good stuff. Ordinance Number 75-2012.
I would like to offer Ordinance Number 75 to be offered for its third reading by title only.
An ordinance to supplement the codified ordinances of the City of Macedonia by enacting new Section 33144 prohibiting the use of wireless handsets to text message, text message while driving.
I move that we pass and post Ordinance Number 75, Ordinance 2012, according to law.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
No.
Ms. Darrell?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
No.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
This legislation was brought forward to mirror, I believe it was House Bill Number 99, which was enacted by the state that prohibits texting. The penalties for this are quite stiff, so it's hard to say yes for something that the penalties are so severe. But with the impact that it has had on people's lives, I vote yes. Moving on.
So what did you do? Did you vote yes or no?
You were prohibiting it.
Yes, I vote yes.
Okay. May I just point out one thing? I'm sorry, Mayor.
Enacting it, sir.
Enacting it, yes.
Yeah, enacting it, yeah.
Can I say one thing?
Yes.
I think the reason I voted for this is that, if we don't pass this ordinance, any citations which go to any court, the fines will go to, would be cited under the state ordinance, and would go to a different, to Cog Falls Municipal Court. But if the police can cite under a city statute, those fines come back to the city and help the city. It's not that we're making the law any more stringent, we're just making sure that if our police are enforcing the law of Ohio and the city in Macedonia, that we're collecting the fines to help pay their salary. So I think it's a no-brainer. Thanks, Mayor.
Is that, is that true, Dave? I thought if they, I thought if they cited under a state statute, I mean, this is still a first-degree misdemeanor, Kurt. Is this a first-degree misdemeanor, Mr. DeWitt?
The exhibit, I, do you have the exhibit?
I imagine it would be, because they're saying that if you text and drive, it's similar to driving while drinking.
No. It's a, it's a small misdemeanor, $300 fine.
Is it a M2 or M3 or...
Could be a suspension of the offender's driver's license. Could be a suspension of the offender's driver's license.
So, it's an MM then, huh?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
It's a serious...serious charge.
But I...I mean, if it was cited under a state statute, wouldn't they still go to Macedonia and their court?
Yes, but this gives the option to the police to cite under our local ordinance, and then the fine money would come to the city, as Councilman Engel indicated. If they cite them under state ordinance and it goes to court, the money goes to the state of Ohio.
So...
Which we like the state, but we like the city better. Of course.
So, in other words, if the city fines them and it's in the mayor's court then, then all that money that's collected...
Stays in the city.
Okay.
As long as they're written under this ordinance now.
But if it's written under the state statute then...
The money would go to the state.
It would go to the state?
Yes.
But we would still retain the court costs, though, huh?
We would, but state cases go to stow automatically anyway, so...
Okay. That's a good point there, Dave.
Yeah, thank you for your expertise. Ordinance number 76-2012.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 76-2012 for its third reading by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into Macedonia occupancy program grant agreement with Arlington Valley Farms LLC.
Very good. We do have a representative here from this brand-new company, and perhaps you can tell us a little bit about yourself.
Happy to have you, Mayor. Councilmembers, good evening. Thank you so very much for entertaining our application for the occupancy program here in Macedonia. I'm Britton Lichen, and along with Peter Jacobson, my business partner, who unfortunately can't be here this evening due to family reasons, we're the proprietors of Arlington Valley Farms. Quite simply stated, we bake food, and generally, we bake and freeze that food and distribute it either to retail outlets or to institutional markets such as school food services or assisted levy and healthcare, so on and so forth. So, we have, through our history, 15-year history, developed different products. We have recently devised a new product that we are excited about and want to take to market. In order to do that, we can't fit in our current facility, so that brings us to 480 East Highland Road here in Macedonia. We're extremely excited about the prospects of being a valued member of the community, as of course Macedonia has a great deal of attributes that are attractive from a business perspective, but also from a lifestyle perspective. So, really, I'm here to represent Arlington Valley Farms and answer your questions, should you have any from me. I can certainly talk about the project cost for this specific effort. It's, you know, $3.5, $3.8 million, depending on how you slice the cake, if you will, pun intended. And for the occupancy program itself, in the first year of operations, which we're projecting is 2013, 16 employees, 10 of which will be hourly wage earners, and 6 of which will be executive staff, you know, national sales managers, plant manager, administration, so on and so forth. So, considerable payback in payroll tax allocations for the city certainly, but even more importantly, we're giving good people good jobs. And again, I'm here to answer your questions, should you have any, please let me know.
You're going to have a retail outlet?
We don't. So, we sell to Giant Eagle and Hyndons and Costco, so on and so forth. So, we don't have...we will not have a retail outlet on-site, nor do we have any anywhere. But certainly, you can come and buy our products at any one of those fine establishments.
And you say in 2013, you start operating out of the Highland Road facility?
Yes, so, I'm sorry, is that the sum total of your question? So, we have equipment that's arriving from overseas due to arrive in December.
Okay.
We want to establish operations. Of course, it will take us a month or two to integrate that equipment with ancillary equipment that we've got, do our school up, and we project to be in full run production sometime in late March or early April. Now, that's an ideal state, so we need...
Where's your other facility at?
It's in Cleveland, Ohio.
Okay.
East Services in Pan...
Don't you need a local taste tester?
We're taking applications anyway, so...
Why don't you tell us a little bit about this product? It's pretty exciting.
Yeah.
It's new. It's different.
It is. So, it's difficult to explain in comparison to other products, because it is somewhat unique. What it is, is a grilled, fully enclosed sandwich that has...you name the filling, whatever you want. Let's, for illustration purposes, say grilled cheese. Around that grilled cheese, insert or filling is a yeast-raised dough, a very thin layer, so a yeast-raised dough is like a dinner roll. That encapsulates the filling, gives the product its continuity. And then around that, we griddle, again, in another closed cavity, a chemically-leavened dough...or batter, excuse me, so like a quick bread or cake. And so, in...excuse me, in retail markets, the consumer will take it out of his freezer, put it in a microwave, and then in a toaster, or take it out of their cool refrigerator and put it directly in a toaster, and you have a crispy exterior, similar to a grilled cheese sandwich that you would make at home, and a molten-hot delicious interior. We've got a variety of SKUs, different flavors, everything from breakfast sandwiches, apples, you know, apple cinnamon, blueberry, you name it, to meal items, so taco, pizza, grilled cheese, barbecue chicken, chipotle, you name it, we've got it. And then we also have dessert items as well, so pumpkin spice and so forth. So, you know, how we attack the different markets that are available to us is something that we're currently working on, but we're pretty sure from the product tests that we've done to date, it's going to be accepted fairly well. As a matter of fact, we already have some statements from suppliers, which is great.
Will the package just say Macedonia, Ohio on it?
Sure, absolutely.
Baked by elves in Macedonia?
Sure, yeah.
Sounds so good.
Yes, exciting. And this is America in action, because this young man and his partner are true entrepreneurs, and they go after making something different that nobody else does, and hopefully, it'll be so successful that someday, you'll be expanding even more. I know you're already talking about room for expansion.
Absolutely correct, and, you know, if history serves us well, Bob Schneider owns the building that we're proposing on buying, of course, he expanded just down the road, I believe. So, you know, hopefully, we can follow in those footsteps. We're very confident about this project. We wouldn't be taking these steps forward, particularly with the capital expenditures that were occurring, if we didn't believe in it. And yes, we're going to chase this aggressively and think it could be a long-term success.
Is there room in that building now for expansion for you?
There is. So, our scalability, of course, is with the single line we have coming in, additional shifts, but beyond that, we could add a second line within the building. Now, for the building commissioner, you know, we're going to have to talk about some exterior freezer space in order to house, finish good, particularly if we scale up. But, you know, again, in initial discussions, it doesn't seem to be a prohibitive factor. So, yes, we can put a second line in the building and double our capacity.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. I want to point out one thing. This gentleman's also a veteran of the Iraq, Afghanistan war.
Good job.
You're the best of luck.
And thank you for choosing us, because you had choices. So, I very much appreciate you choosing us.
Well, again, I was being sincere when I said there's many attractive attributes about Macedonia, so thank you for considering.
Good.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post, according to law, ordinance 76-2012.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ordinance number 76-2012 passes. Welcome. Ordinance 77-2012.
I'd like to offer ordinance 77-2012 for its third reading by title only.
An ordinance amending ordinance 11999, adjusting the full-time compensation of the position of mayor effective the first day of the next mayoral term, that being December 1, 2015, in order to account for the cost of living increases and to compare more closely with adjacent communities.
Josephine, I move to amend ordinance number 77-2012 to adjust to the total of $65,000 per year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post.
I move that we pass and post, according to law, ordinance 77-2012.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ordinance 72-2012 passes. Moving on to resolution number 80-2012.
I would like to offer resolution number 80-2012 for its...its second and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, here we go. Here we go. A resolution authorizing the purchase of tablet-type devices for all members of council, the mayor, and all department heads.
And what's your pleasure?
Mayor, I'd like to amend the ordinance as it sits to remove the department heads, not that we don't feel you could use them, but for right now, we're going to test with council, mayor, and the clerk.
Mr....Mr. Molnar, I would...I would not support this ordinance if the tablets for the department heads were removed. I think...I think based on our earlier rationales, several of them, to Ms. Metzl, I think the department head should have them, and I'm prepared to go forward and approve these for the department heads, because Macedonia is a modern city, we're a progressive city, and we need to recognize that, and we need to move forward, not backward. We need to move forward.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes.
We're in the end of October. We're talking about, it's $800 for two years. How much was the price of the quote?
I believe the quote was $399 per unit.
No, it was more than that.
It's six...if I can, a little bit over $600, so...
Okay, so $600...
If we get a useful life out of them, I'm thinking $150, a little bit over, per year, per councilman. And I would ask that, you know, you do exclude the department heads, because it can come out of their own budget if they wish to purchase one, if they feel that that's a need, because there's other avenues that they use, because they do have a computer domicile at this place. And it would be up to me, as far as if I wanted to purchase or my department wanted to act with that. I would just, if I can, I know I'm speaking out of school here, that as long as the department heads, because I see the efficiency in having them, because it takes away the police department have to contact you, and also from the privacy issues that you've discussed before. So, if council, in my opinion, would just elect for them to pass that ordinance, we do have money in Capital 401 that would just include them, and then the mayor, and then obviously, the council clerk.
So, Scott, you're going to be able to purchase them anyway. Is that correct?
Through, if the departments decide to, within their own budget, I would...I would ask that they just do that within their own budget, instead of taking it out of Capital.
Okay, good.
I get...I still think, you know, we're close to the end of the year. I think we should do this as part of the regular budgetary process next year. We've had all types of discussions as to what type of tablets we're going to talk about, but yet, nobody's really discussed, you know, done a study. I'm unclear as to whether or not there...there needs to be software to support these tablets, particularly since we're going to be interfacing with the city's server. This is, to me, an extravagance that we really don't need at this time, and so, for that...for those reasons, I'm opposed to it, and I understand that people are concerned about emails, but if everyone would follow the city's policy on emails, and whenever you're sending an email for city business, you're supposed to copy it to the clerk, and the clerk is responsible for keeping all those. And if we would just follow our own rules, it wouldn't be a problem, because you just say to Josephine...
You do copy.
I do.
You do copy me.
Yeah, but first of all, Dave, you just voted to increase the mayor's salary, and secondly, you know...
So, did you vote to improve...increase the mayor's salary?
Yeah, I did. I voted yes. But the thing about it is, is that, look, during our working day, it is very, very difficult to juggle so many balls in the air. And the whole point is, is that even though I can do, as you just stated, with Josephine, the fact of the matter is, is that somebody could still subpoena my unit, they could mine it, they could take a look at it, and I'm not going to risk my client's information being somehow, how should I say, revealed, just simply because somebody has filed a Freedom of Information request.
There are laws to protect you from that type of money.
And they're very costly, and they're very cumbersome, and you have to go to court, and you have to argue, and it costs tens of thousands of dollars.
It doesn't cost tens of thousand dollars for a subpoena.
I've been through this with subpoenas, and I've been through this asking for information.
Well...
It just...
It's why we have a law department to protect us.
And then if the court makes a poor decision, and then you have to appeal it, this is a very, very difficult...I think these iPads, I think we need to be progressive, we need to be modern. The same arguments were made against cell phones years ago. Well... Mr. Schwab, is there money in...you said there's enough in the 401, I believe it was?
Yes.
Without having to do any re-appropriations or taking money from anything, there's enough in there to do that in this current budget?
Yes.
Yes.
You know, the other problem is, you're just making it more complex. We all have computers at our desk now, where we've been able to get the emails for all the years we've been on council. So, now, we're going to have to carry another device, and, you know, it's just, it's going to be on and on. I can't imagine we're all going to be carrying two or three iPads, you know, an iPad for work, an iPad for the city, you know. The system isn't broke, we don't need to fix it.
You don't need an iPad, just don't take one.
I like...Mr. Engel, I'd like to point out to Ken's point, you know, a lot of times, I'm sure you email from your work computer, I mean, the company you work for would probably not be real happy if someone came in and commandeered that unit.
They are sure they wouldn't.
It's a protection for you as much as anything. I mean, it's not a matter of having, what'd you call it, an extravagancy?
I'm not sure of the word I use, but it is extravagant.
To me, this is not a matter of, you know, something extravagant, it's a matter of protection and something that will be useful and improve communication.
But we have a policy in effect that would protect us, because if we would follow it, all our emails will be at the clerk's office, and I forget her official designation, but it's the keeper of the emails, whatever it is. I don't...what is your designation?
Whatever you want, but I...
No, you know, there is official word, I remember, when we passed the ordinance.
Well, and I understand what Dave's saying.
Yes.
If we did follow that, but there's a lot of things that, you know, if we all followed, not that we intentionally do this, but this is going to, as soon as I generate something from this device, it's right there, it's all right there, I can just hand it to Josephine or whoever to have it taken care of. And I guarantee people will say, oh, I haven't found what we wanted, he's hiding it.
And I guarantee you, in two years, we're going to say, we need to update these things. And that's going to be a continuous cost. There's going to be...there may or may not be monthly fees that we don't...we haven't really discussed yet to support these. You know, it's spend, spend, spend.
Dave, is the law that I'm supposed to keep my emails, is that true or false?
I...I've never heard...
Because I don't keep my emails.
I've never heard that.
And they're going to get my computer out of my cold, dead hand.
Mr. Deemer, what's your...
Give us your opinion.
What's your opinion on that? We're not allowed to delete our emails.
Yes. We've written opinions on that before to council.
My cold, dead hand.
Then we're not supposed to delete them from our private computers?
Correct. They got to be saved, any public...
That's why we send them to Josephine, she sends them.
Correct. Then they're saved.
Mr. Engel does, just for the record. Mr. Engel does send me the emails.
And considering the amount of time that that would take, and how archaic that is, that we have to copy her, she needs to copy it and send it to see what the file is.
We push one button, it says Jay in Josephine R.C.C. pops up.
How about you send it on one unit, and you're done?
I never send her a copy of it.
Well, you should.
Why? If I'm talking to you, I don't have her to know it, too.
If it's a public document, the policy is, everything should go to Josephine, then we don't have this problem.
And then what happens if your paralegal jumps on your computer, and she's going through it, and, oh, he doesn't need that, bing, bing, bing.
If you've sent it to Josephine, you don't need it, because Josephine has it.
Well, she wouldn't...she might not know that. But we've asked for emails in this town, and they've disappeared into thin air. Call the question. I think we've had enough discussion.
Well, there was a...
Did they suspend yet, uh, there's a motion to amend and a roll call?
It was, Mister Molnar moved to amend, to move the department heads, then there was, okay.
I move that we...
All in favor?
Oh, well, I need, I need a roll call on that, do you want a roll call on the, to move the...
On the amendment?
Mm-hmm.
You need a roll call?
Do you want that?
Okay, roll call.
However you wanna do it.
Yes, you do need a roll call.
Okay. I was just waiting for the, everyone to stop talking. Mister Barker?
Yes.
Miss Darrow?
Yes.
Mister Engel?
No.
Mister Martin?
Yes.
Mister Miller?
Are we voting to not buy department heads?
Mm-hmm. No, you're mo-voting on Mister Molnar's motion...
Which was?
To, um, to remove department heads.
I'm voting yes to remove department heads.
Okay. Um, Mister Molnar?
Just to be clear, and not to beat this anymore, Scott and I talked about removing the department heads prior, so you guys can all stop shooting the lasers at my head, we, we, we discussed this prior to the meeting, so, my vote's yes.
Okay. So now...
I move that we pass ordinance number eighty, two thousand twelve, according to law.
Second.
Was there a suspension already, Josephine?
Yes, there was, Miss Darrow, already the second and third reading and that passed. Roll call?
Roll call.
Okay. Mister Barker?
Yes.
Miss Darrow?
Yes.
Mister Engel?
No.
Mister Martin?
Yes.
Mister Miller?
No.
Mister Molnar?
Yes.
Resolution number eighty, two thousand twelve passes, moving on to resolution number eighty-one, two thousand twelve.
I'd like to offer resolution number eighty-one, two thousand twelve, for its second and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
A resolution authorizing the implement, implementation of an emergency operations disaster plan.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post resolution number eighty-one, two thousand and twelve.
Roll call.
Mister Barker?
Yes.
Miss Darrow?
Yes.
Mister Engel?
Yes.
Mister Martin?
Yes.
Mister Miller?
Yes.
This particular item was asked for, that we do this by the auditor in the audit report. Moving on to ordinance number eighty-two dash two thousand twelve.
Mister Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance eighty-two, two thousand twelve, for first, second, third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
An ordinance amending and supplementing the twenty-twelve annual appropriations ordinance twenty-one, two thousand twelve.
Mister Mayor, this is, uh, most of these appropriations are pass-throughs, are, particularly the one which isn't, was an increase in electricity, which of course, the city can't control the electrical rates. But we haven't had an opportunity to go through all of the, of the, uh, additional ones, so if we could, Scott, could you continue and, and briefly, uh, highlight these for us, so that we know exactly what they are, particularly those that are not pass-throughs?
The pa, the only one that's affecting the budget is that fund two oh one, where I'm asking for an increase in appropriations from general to two oh one for the tree replacement service department, Jim Krevar, he, uh, with, uh, Tom Rhodey, our tree expert, they wanted to, they got some quotes from various, uh, nurseries, and I believe Hudson Nursery came in, uh, the cheapest, with, I believe this is for fifty trees to be planted yet this fall, they indicated they'd still have time. And these are tree replacements along the areas of, uh, the city where, uh, they've taken them down for the birch borer and other reasons.
You mean the ash borer?
Yes.
MR. Ash borer?
And, and, so we don't have any funds, uh, within the two oh one, and we can't use this, the other, uh, fund for the, uh, new subdivision tree, that money is only used for the, uh, when, when new subdivision trees are replaced, so, this was a, an extra cost that he indicated to see if council would approve this.
So the increase in the electric, uh, streetlights, and the five thousand for the tree is actually an increase in our appropriation, the others represent pass-throughs, which means that we've received the money, uh, and now we're, uh, properly depositing it in our checkbook?
Yes.
Okay. If council's satisfied, I'd like to, uh, make a, I move that we pass and post ordinance eighty-two, two thousand twelve, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Mister Barker?
Yes.
Miss Darrow?
Yes.
Mister Engel?
Yes.
Mister Martin?
Yes.
Mister Miller?
Yes.
Mister Molnar?
Yes.
Eighty-two, two thousand twelve passes, we have another ordinance to introduce this evening, eighty-three dash two thousand twelve.
Mister Mayor, I'd like to add ordinance number eighty-three, twenty-twelve, to tonight's agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
I thought that was... No.
Okay, um...
I didn't, I didn't even have a chance to look at this.
I think we're only gonna do this for first reading, aren't we?
Well, this is closing out Shepherd Road. Uh, Shepherd Road was completed, um, there were a lot of variables in Shepherd Road, and the negotiations went on for some time, because there was some change orders. The change orders were mostly due, uh, if you'll remember, at that time, we had, um, to use our right-of-way at the corner of Crow and Shepherd Hills Boulevard, and, um, or Sue, as it's called down there, and the people refused the city that right. So we had to completely go around that property, which resulted in change orders.
Mister Mayor, why is this piece of legislation critical? Do we need to pass it tonight?
Can I, can I speak to that, Mayor?
Yes.
The attorney, we've been working with the attorneys for, uh, JJJ, Triple J, who's been, have been doing the job, uh, the engineer was required, and he'll give you more details, to authorize certain additional work that had to get done, in order to move this job along and get it done before the snow flies. The contractor has gone ahead, even though we haven't passed a change order, in order to accommodate getting this job done in a quick fashion. If we don't pay him soon, which is what this ordinance authorizes us to do, then they can lean the city and cause us some disruption of, of our financial situation. So, in order to stop that from happening, we've been going back and forth with their lawyers, with the contractors, with the engineers, and negotiating the settlement, which was just finalized at, uh, about three o'clock this afternoon, where they agreed on a lesser amount than we actually, uh, estimated the cost to be. So it is kind of an urgent matter, in the sense that if we don't pay them soon, uh, then they're gonna have to file a lien, because the time periods for filing the lien, uh, will expire before your next meeting, and that's why it has some urgency.
Yeah, you know, Mister Mayor, I, I read this legislation over, and considering the work that's been done on Shepherd Boulevard, I, I'm in accord with you that this needs to be passed this evening. I support this piece of legislation, because one of the constant complaints we hear is concerns of roadwork in our city and the condition of the roads, and, um, I don't think council should really quibble about this, I think that we should make an affirmative vote, because this is going to benefit our residents, it's gonna benefit the, uh, project, and Mister Deemer certainly laid out a very strong case for acting quickly and acting tonight.
And part of the negotiations included that the, this fifty thousand, although it's already budgeted for and okay, uh, in our accounts, as I understand it, Scott, it's available, doesn't need any, uh, special, uh, borrowing of money or anything. The second phase of this will be saving over fifty thousand dollars, as I understand it, uh, and therefore will be a wash in the end.
What do you mean, the second phase?
Well, the, uh, work on Bavaria, the work on Bruce, uh, came in under just about what this one's over, so when everything's said and done, it's a wash.
Scott, my question is, since this, there's no appropriation, you're, you're, you're representing to council that this fifty thousand dollars still brings the project within the original appropriation for capital?
The total appropriations for both projects.
Right.
We had, of the Bruce Road, Bavarian, that whole segment of projects came in under budget, and so that excess there that's under budget will be applied to Shepherd Hills Road Boulevard.
So it's, in a sense, it's budget neutral, in the sense that we are not spending money that we hadn't planned to spend on...
Yes.
...capital roadway projects anyways?
Yes.
Okay.
Nick, do you have, did you wanna say something?
I just wanted to mention that the twenty-twelve road program right now, um, is about a hundred thousand dollars under budget, so it's about double of what the extra for this project is.
Good job.
Mister Mayor, I'd like...
By all means.
Mister Mayor, I'd, I'd like to introduce, uh, number, ordinance number eighty-three, two thousand twelve, for its first, second, third reading by title only.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
An ordinance authorizing change order to the contract between Three J Enterprises, Inc., and the City of Macedonia regarding the Shepherd Hills Project.
Mister Mayor, I move that we pass and post ordinance number eighty-three, two thousand twelve.
Second.
Roll call.
Mister Barker?
Yes.
Miss Darrow?
No.
Mister Engel?
Yes.
Mister Martin?
Yes.
Mister Miller?
Yes.
Mister Molnar?
Yes.
Ordinance number eighty-three, two thousand twelve passes, moving on, is there any other motions or legislative actions this evening? Hearing none, is there any correspondence to the clerk?
Uh, Mayor, just have a little one, and it's just a thank you note. I don't have it. Oh, I do. It's just a very brief thank you note from the, um, uh, Contura family to Lieutenant Davis, Dave Chesnick, Dubrastovich, Dave Abirth, and Chase, uh, Chase Rose regarding expedient emergency care provided the family.
Very good. Um, next is the mayor's report, I can't even believe it's the twenty-fifth, there's only two more months to Christmas. As the seasons change, we need to remind you of things we want you to do, and I think we should do, to be good neighbors. Please don't blow your leaves in the street, leaves very easily become dams and impair the ability for stormwater to disappear without causing damage. Does that mean you will be arrested if some leaves are in the street in front of your house? Well, that's ridiculous. Leaves do what they wanna do and not what we want them to, but please, do the best you can to keep the drains clear. The intent to turn our old city hall into a senior center has been stopped at this time. I have received written decisions from the elected officials of Northfield and Sagamore Hills, that they would rather pursue the church facility in Northfield Center. They are talking about the municipalities renting the Epiphany Church for once-a-week meetings. Each municipality would pay a portion of the rent, and the seniors would also pay at the door. I have not heard from Northfield Center regarding the old city hall, other than what I read in the leader, and Boston Hills Mayor advised me that they will not be participating in any senior center at this time. Actually, the next step was to have just a meeting to talk over the feasibility, possibility, and actual affordability of using the existing building here in Macedonia. Fixing the building was going to be done with donations, using municipal funds never were the intent, and that's been inferred over and over. I have not been asked if Mastonia is interested in joining with the hall rental, but I think this is a decision for the local ARP chapters to make first anyway. Our councilwoman Rita Darrow had volunteered to be council's representative and, on this project, and will be following up on our behalf, thank you. Originally, I was approached by those ARP chapters who now hold their meeting at the Methodist Church for no charge, to try and get them a place to call home. The motivation was their desire to have a place, they could come and go as they pleased, they actually have been using facilities just for having their ARP meetings for quite some times. They've been using halls like the Methodist Church, the VFW Hall, and actually, our community room. But they would like to have a place that would be their special place to have a pickup card game, or maybe some classes for them that would help them deal with aging, or do some crafting, or just hang out for idle conversation. You know, I read an article describe, uh, describing being a retired senior in a magazine, and that there are many active senior minds out there that need and want to stay active. Boredom and depression happen too many times to people have a lot of life left in them, but then it starts to slip away with inactivity. Dementia or depression can ruin the autumn of their life. Somehow, some way, I will always keep the senior center idea alive, and perhaps another opportunity will rise in the future. I will be exploring other options with our county officials, and I would like to thank Russ Pry and Nick Costandares for reaching out with a possible way to help us give the seniors a quote "home," as they did in this venture. The whole idea was suggested by a very nice senior named Earlene Savery, and the intent was simply to try and make this happen for her and her group of seniors, and all seniors, and that includes Frank Ambosi and his ARP chapter. To turn such a worthy project into a political football is ludicrous. It's really not my way or the highway, and it's definitely not about me wanting other communities to deal with our problems, as been suggested. Changing the subject, we have a huge election coming up, and I'm hearing a lot of indecisiveness, I think everybody is being turned off and tuned out by all the negativity in political campaigns. I think I know too much information about candidates' personal lives and their mistake, and not enough information about their patriotism. I think we need to get back to basics, run the country efficiently, fix the things that are broken, make decisions that would be best for our country, rather than a lobbyist representing big money. If a man like our congressman, Steve Lotterett, is frustrated, perhaps doing that which is best for the people and the country may be unattainable. I've met his successor, though, and he's a Republican, his name is Dave Joyce, he's a prosecutor from Jogger County, just like Steve was a prosecutor from Lake County. I see similarities in more ways than that. I think Dave is going to maintain Congressman Lotterett's ideals, and he is maintaining his staff. Let me tell you, staff is key as an elected official in Washington. Dave has the right attitude, and he and Steve Lotterett are very close friends, so if you replace somebody, and that somebody you replace is your friend, then they're going to help you when you need help to do the job that needs to be done. Please have a safe Halloween, and remember to honor our veterans on Veterans Day, and I would also like to acknowledge Fred and Doris Shuld for their continued support in keeping me and their thoughts and prayers. They have been residents of Macedonia since nineteen fifty-eight, and Fred and his wife have always been an asset to our community. Moving on with committee reports.
Uh, Mister Mayor, we had a planning, um, commission meeting on Monday, and, uh, the planning commission approved an oversized structure, and, um, we also approved a, a sign, and, um, it's my understanding that the planning commission also took a look at, uh, Taco Bell, uh, design for a renovation of their present location on Route eighty-two. And, um, I believe our next meeting is going to be, uh, planning commission will be Monday, and that will be on, um, November twelfth, and also letting everyone know that the, um, suggested amendments to the, um, covenants and restrictions... And also letting everyone know that the suggested amendments to the covenants and restrictions at Arbor Trails, they were also approved, so anyone in Arbor Trails certainly should take a look at the amendments and see how the amendments have expanded their opportunities to do more with their property than was previously allowed. Just very quickly, Mayor, I just want to thank the city, its employees, for the nice and very warm condolences that were sent to me and my family upon the death of my mother. At the wake, Mr. Engel appeared, Ms. R.C.C. and her husband appeared, and Ms. Darrow was there, and that meant a lot because the services were held in Avon Lake, Ohio. And I just want to thank everyone for being so gracious and so kind. And my family said that it is so wonderful to be part of a city which does these kinds of things, and they were so impressed by Mr. Engel, by Ms. R.C.C. and her husband, and Ms. Darrow. So I guess I'm pretty lucky to be living in Macedonia, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken, this might be a good time to repeat what you were saying in our session before the meeting about the style of architecture in the town center, and why we have to be very, very careful what is allowed there, as far as Taco Bell.
Yeah, I just, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to point out that we had a situation years ago when Boston Chicken came to town, Boston Market, and they wanted to put up one of their prototype buildings that looked like a Boston Chicken building. And at the time, Mr. Miglari was mayor, and we had a very good planning commission with people like Ron Kovac, Kurt Lawbinger, Bob Fitzjeldt, myself, and that's when we started the Western Reserve Architecture. And they also wanted an electronic sign, too, but I'm not going to get into that, Mr. Mayor. But at any rate, but at any rate, what they did was, they, they wanted to build their own prototype corporate-style building, and they told us that, hey, we're going to be here forever. Well, we told them they had to build Western Reserve, and they ended up building a very, very nice building, and about six months later, they went out of business. The company went bankrupt. By the way, I own 200 shares of stock in it, and I lost everything. So, so at any rate, the thing is, though, that when they did shut down, we found another tenant, Arby's, moved right in, and you can see how beautiful that building looks and how it's really adaptable just to any type of fast food or retail situation, because Western Reserve Architecture is timeless in its beauty. It's really modeled after the Greeks, the Neoclasses, Neoclassical period, the architecture of that era, and it kind of took me off guard, Mayor, by asking you that question, but I think I'm going to stop.
Thank you. The important thing is that the city always tries to work with people so that they can maintain their identity, yet we need to have conformity because we've done it in other situations. If you look at our Steak and Shake, it is the only brick Steak and Shake in the country. That's what we were told. So these kind of things are very, very important, but to show that we allow identity, if you look at the new Dunkin' Donuts, you can definitely see the Western Reserve influence, yet you see something that says, this is Dunkin' Donuts. And speaking of them, the date now is November 8th, so it's getting close. Any other committee reports? Moving on to department reports. Nick?
Thank you, Mayor. The 2012 road program was supposed to be completed by the end of this week. Contractor ran into some delays from weather, so Bavaria Road will start early next week. That work will be completed that week. Engineering Department is currently working on South Bedford Road on two fronts, one on the Safe Walk to School funding program through AMAS, and we are also working on the federal reclassification supplemental to AMAS to be eligible for funding. NU RSD currently has their fee credit manual out for, they've made some minor revisions, it's out for review. They'll consider the comments and adopt the changes and pass this in November. Engineering Department, in conjunction with building, will approach council with some amended ordinances that would allow our residents to take advantage of some of the fee credits that will be available that currently would violate our code, so we'll present those in the next couple of weeks. And engineering's also working with service to collect on the Highland Road great, or the Highland Road waterline break in the state Route 82 waterline break with the water department. Law Department has offered their services, and if it gets to the point where we need them, they'll ask Joe or Tom to help us out and collect from the water department. That's it.
Very good. Mike?
Yes. Thanks, Mayor. As I stated last meeting, permits are still up. We're very busy, not necessarily with new construction, but alterations interior, alterations additions, new businesses coming into existing buildings, and then changing the buildings over. We're extremely busy with it. As you stated, Dunkin' Donuts wanted to open by Halloween, but it looks like it's going to be the beginning of November, when everything is completed. Discount Tire today, we gave them full approval, so hopefully, they'll be in Monday or Tuesday to pick up permits. That concludes my report.
Good job. Angela?
Thank you, Mayor. Saturday, November 17th, sounds far away, but in fact, it is only about three weeks away. That is a busy day for the Recreation Department. We have two large events going on that day. First, we have a breakfast buffet with Santa at the Recreation Center for nine, from 9:30 to 11:30 a.m. It's a catered event, pre-registration is required, $5 per person, children, children under six eat for free, and Santa will be arriving on a fire truck. We'll have caroling and all kinds of holiday activities, and this is this year in lieu of our traditional evening program that we've put on in the past. So we're trying something different, trying to attract more people to attend this event. So I do suggest that people register for this well in advance. Also, that day, beginning at 9:00 a.m. and concluding at 2:00 p.m. is our annual winter craft show. We have outgrown our space at the Recreation Center. We actually had a waiting list last year, so we can accommodate more vendors. We'll be holding this at the Epiphany Lutheran Church. We are still seeking vendors, and you can apply at the Recreation Center. We are also currently accepting applications for water and land fitness instructors to begin new class programs, beginning in January. So if you are a qualified instructor, or you know someone who is a qualified instructor looking, who has some availability, looking for some extra, extra work, please send them our way to apply as well. Also, we are close to coming, striking a deal to fill the vacant space in the Recreation Center that the Cleveland Clinic previously occupied, so hopefully, in, within the next few meetings, I'll be able to announce that that's been finalized. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Good job. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. The brief commentary for the Rita summary report in your package shows we're 925,573 above 2011 collections for the same period in 2011. This is an 18% increase in revenue growth, obviously attributed to the quarter percent three-year income tax, but also at least 4% growth that we've had, other than the special funds, what they call special fund revenue. The income tax summary report that's also in your packet shows the collections from January to October received to date are $6,549, and this is in comparison, comparison to $6,691 for the entire year in 2011. So next month, we'll eclipse the actual amount that we received from 2011. I projected we're going to receive $7.4 million, which will be close to almost $1 million of additional revenue from 2011. The Joint Economic Development District, the JID, as we call it, also is doing well, and it's up 29.8% for the year, and obviously, this is all the retail growth. We've collected $242,000 to date, compared to 186 through distributions ending October 11th, and we share that 50% with our, our neighbor to the east or west. Just a quick synopsis, I provided a graph on the jail analysis. That was one of the things that we had to increase appropriations for, the jail expenses, and that's directly attributed to, we have 1,073 total jail inmates this year, compared to all of 2011, 949. So that's 124 additional people, and we still have three months left of the year. So the meals is one of the largest expenses, and we have a vendor that's done a great job for us, and that's one of the big expenses that we have. But again, we get reimbursed from Stowe and Talmadge and Silver Lake and Northfield, and it's a great model for, local governments always talk about regionalization in Macedonia through our jail, through our dispatch, through our muni court, I think mayor's court, we pretty well are a model for that. Our, our revenues exceed expenses through the third quarter for the jail. We're showing an additional $40,000 of what we spent, and that includes our personnel, as well as the meals operating and the additional costs that we have increased. And I also wanted to point out, in the past, and this was through Chief Golden's direction and our past jailer, who had retired this year, he implemented that we start doing our laundry in-house, which sounds like a minor thing, but when you put the wash machine down, and our building department coordinated with our street department, and we had an electrician, we put all that in right at the beginning of the year, and we saved, our average laundry bill used to be between $5 and $600, so we saved, we will be saving additional $6,000 in jail expenses by just transferring that, that duty over to our jailers. So that's the kind of innovation that, that really I like to see as far as working with the departments, and this was Gary's idea?
Yeah, Gary and I talked-
Gary and them implemented, they had some space alongside the jail, and it was a great innovation, and maybe towards we can start cutting costs on meals operating. And one of the things that I know a resident complained about, or at least had an issue with, was our lack of animal control, and I know the chief has been bugging me, at least in a kind way, about trying to implement a system where we did use a animal control person in the past, but unfortunately, it cost almost $6,000 a year. If we contract with Summit County, the only problem is that they're limited to between seven and four. So if you have a stray dog in between those odd hours-
No weekends are left.
Yeah, we're basically out of luck, and, and we, Sherry and the street department, as well as, I know you talked to Mr. Suter, so we're trying to work on arrangement, we'll be less than that and have a number of regular calls, also combined with emergency calls. And again, this is, I would like to see it probably, we really are stretched to the budget as we head into the fourth quarter, and maybe we'll talk about that in council to see if we can appropriate additional into next year's budget. If council so elects, maybe $4,000 or $5,000 to address this issue. You know, I've got my own opinion about whether the city should actually come out and trap your skunk. I'm not so sure that's were in our agency, but there's different levels of services that this animal control contract offers, but I think for keeping stray dogs and keeping the nuisance of vicious dogs off the street, I think we need to probably work towards that end and get some type of program, even if it's minimal, to be able to say we got it covered. That's all I have.
Thank you, and that does show that when people complain, we listen, and we try. We were cut back so far and had so many cuts in years gone by, and it's reflected by, all of a sudden, somebody calling up and say, hey, why don't we have a dog catcher? And you realize that that dog catcher was not affordable, and had, we couldn't give that service. So again, too, this could be another way we give back.
Yes.
Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one thing, our annual Halloween party is this Sunday from 4 till 6. That's a change of a day from Saturday to Sunday, and also the time, 4 to 6, so we're hoping to see everybody there. That's it.
Very good. John?
Just a quick note, driving around today, I saw two people with headphones in. If you can remind everybody that, you know, particularly the younger folks with the iPads, the earphones are illegal to have while you're driving. If you can pass the word. I was asked to mention Tuesday, I believe it was, we had a lost child from Ledgeview School. A lot of man hours went in to find this child. We had great help from the fire department. Working with Donna Bambic at Ledgeview School is wonderful, they have great plans in place. The child was found safe, without a problem, but it just goes to show you that this, this was the perfect storm. So many things had to fall into place for this child to come up missing for two and a half hours or two hours. It, it, it's unbelievable that everything could, could fall into place for this to happen, but that's generally how it goes. So it did turn out all right. The child was found at, at a daycare up in Northfield, and we had a meeting, and we discussed it with the mother and the child and the school, and I had Mark Wentz, Chief Wentz, come down from Northfield and taken care of.
Thank goodness.
Yes.
Anything else?
Chief, we were talking earlier in the work session about the money that the jail's been bringing in. You get enough, do you need more hours with jailers there? I mean, you know, I don't like the officers having to come and do-
We need a lot more hours with jailers. We're, we're minimally staffed now. You know, we, we have usually three-quarter full, if not more.
You're minimally staffed because of you can't get them to work, or you don't have it in the budget to pay them?
Well, I don't have it in the budget. I have, I have X amount of hour, or actually, I have X amount of dollars so I can fill it with, you know.
Let's get together in the next couple of weeks, and let's see if we can't change that. I think that's, if you don't have jailers in there, I think that's a real, real problem.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Joe?
Nothing, Mayor.
All right. Moving on, is there any unfinished business? Any new business?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you. Come again next meeting.